And. Since there's only four of us, let's do. We did sound, we won't be able to do the approval of Jenna, so let's do introductions. Doug.
Doug Carmen, District Two.
Thank you. Don.
And Don Dehand, District One.
And Eric.
Eric Casino, District Two.
And I'm Jim Simmons, District Three. So now is the time for public comments. You, if you're new to this, we have, you are allowed three minutes to state your comments. If you start running over it, I will just ask you to wrap up and so we can continue. So is there, you can go to the, just raise your hand in, in there and, and we will call on you. Is there anybody interested? In sharing today? Got you, Kristy, go ahead. I'm not hearing you, Kristy, are you muted? I can unmute you. I'm trying, hang on, there you go.
Now you can hear me, okay?
Yeah, my bad.
The technology. So, thank you, gentlemen, I, I wanted to talk about the wireless code. I'm really concerned that the process for the wireless code changes feel really one-sided and somewhat adversarial in terms of the presentation that was made about changing the code and all of the work with the county is, is from a law firm. And, I'm sorry. It's from a law firm and is, was asked for by the prosecuting attorney's office. And I really feel that, you know, there's been so much conversation about wireless code and what wireless means for us as, as a society is that we really need to have some input from the other side. Okay, let's look at the code, your, the code's being completely rewritten. And how about having someone who can say, you know, let's look at some of these components of it and see if they are balanced, that it's not just all for the wireless companies to kind of come in and put towers everywhere and not think about both sides of the process. I know that's sort of what's done in a public hearing, but it feels to me like we should really look at it before it goes to a public hearing. So you, as planning commission members, can also review those comments and revisions that would be suggested to this code before it goes to public hearing. That way we have the win-win, we've got it more even playing field. With this, I mean, it's 64 pages long and the whole last section is being rewritten. I did see some good things in the review that I've been able to do. But for instance, some of the paragraphs are written with the term, I'm so sorry, are written with the term encourage. And I think it should be required. There's paragraphs that refer to an explanation. Well, maybe it should be a study. A little bit more firm on some of these things, so it just, it just feels like it's coming in a little heavy and tilted towards the wireless companies. And I, and I'd like to ask that we, we balance it out. So, those are my comments tonight, thank you for listening to me.
Thanks, Kristy. Looks like we have Josh Stottlemyre. And I apologize, I'm on this phone and I can't. Oh, there you go. Do we got you, Josh? Crap. Polly, can you unmute him?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah, I got you now, sorry.
Okay, great. All right, good evening, everybody. My name's Josh Stottlemyre, I am a Thurston County resident. There's currently an ongoing case against the FCC that challenges the decision not to review its 25-year-old health guidelines. The judge in the case has stated he is likely to rule against this FCC. The case will likely have consequences on the rules being considered by this body. I strongly recommend that further development of rules be postponed. Currently, the FCC only tests cell phones for possible thermal damage. Peer-reviewed published studies provide irrefutable evidence of harm from wireless devices non-thermal exposure. The harmful effects include fatigue, headaches, sleep problems, anxiety, ringing in the ears, heart problems, learning memory disorders, increased cancer risk, and many more. The World Health Organization classifies radio frequency radiation such as emitted from most wireless devices and towers as a 2B possible carcinogen. This is in addition to documented effects on animals, plants, insects, and the environment. In cities across the US, people are waking up to a construction project in their front yard. It may be in the public right-of-way, but no one expects a small cell tower to go up in front of their house with no notice and no recourse. Yet this is happening thanks to the FCC rules you are working on adopting. The tower facilities can be changed or added to without notice or consent to really anyone unless the county requires such, which you must. A survey by the National Institute for Science, Law, and Public Policy found that 94% of home buyers are less interested and would pay less for a property near a cell tower or antenna. Public Utility Code Section 7901 provides that use of roads by telephone companies cannot incommode the public use of the road, which means to unreasonably subject the public use to inconvenience or discomfort, unreasonably trouble, annoy, impede, or obstruct public use. Please survey your residents, no one wants a tower in their front yard. Or even in their view, it'll definitely cause annoyance and discomfort. These new rules give no consideration to citizens or the right of the municipality to make decisions about what's best for them. Provisions must be adopted to provide a way to object to and stop installation of cell sites on public and private property. Although these, along these lines, I have the following recommendations. Number one, require a permit be obtained by the installer for all external wireless antennas, including house-mounted antennas. Require insurance from all entities participating in the installation of the wireless facility, not just the applicant. Require any applicants for wireless facilities demonstrate and provide that there is a significant gap in coverage that they are covering, that wireless companies who will be leasing from the host provider provide all their information. Require the applicant to detail how the facilities would obtain power, fiber connections, and other hookups. Show the structure is engineered to support the weight of the current or additional equipment and that it will not impede right-of-way obstruct views necessary for traffic flow or obstruct scenic views. Finally, require applicant and subsequent site installers to provide notice to all residents and businesses in range of the modified facility before approving the permit. I have more detailed recommendations and references and sources I will email, I have emailed yesterday to the commissioners, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Is there anybody else that would like to speak during our comment period? Anybody else? Okie dokie, we're moving on, thank you for those that have commented. We're going into our work session on the wireless code, so, and our staff person today would be Caitlin Nelson.
Hello. We are working out some technical difficulties with the consultant attendance, but he should be showing up soon here. Let me pull up my presentation and share the screen. Okay, well, good evening. My name is Caitlin Nelson, I am an associate planner with community planning, and we are talking about the wireless code update and the draft. At this phase in the review, staff have developed a draft with the help of Ken Feldman, our consultant, and input from service providers. The last group meeting with providers was January 9th, 2020, so it was a while ago, but it, the outcome resulted in significant changes based on those recommendations. I will be asking the planning commission to, well, I would have been asking the planning commission to set a public hearing tonight, if you're ready to do so with a forum, but let's continue. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to go over the, the highlights of the draft code amendment, which was provided to the planning commission for review and answer any questions or make adjustments at the direction of the planning commission before finalizing the draft for a public hearing and a formal comment period. As detailed in the presentation provided by Ken on March 17th and in the memo provided to you by staff, federal law does preempt local regulation of wireless facilities on a number of fronts. Once the hearing date is set, the public may provide any concern or topic and the planning commission and staff will work to make any necessary changes, but within the legal sideboard that we've been provided. Some of these required changes to the code include the necessary approval of those modifications that are not a substantial change with a new definition by federal regulations, including new permit review guidelines, including a process and a timeline for that review and the removal of code language that has the effect of prohibiting wireless services or limits environmental effects of radio frequency emissions beyond what the FCC regulations are, so. That does still leave us with quite a few considerations, especially design elements, height setbacks, spacing, camouflage, concealment, and also zoning regulations and permitted locations of the type of permits necessary. So with that being said, I would like to know if you have any questions on the draft code that was provided to you.
Caitlin, would you, would you mind telling us a little bit about Mr. Feldman and who hired him and who hired them specifically and who's paying the bill for their work on this particular project?
I don't know, Jennifer, I don't know if you could hop in here, but I believe that he was hired by the attorney's office, I believe the funding is coming from them, but I don't know the details beyond that.
Yeah, the Thurston County Prosecuting Attorney's Office is managing that contract since this is an issue of compliance with federal law for the county. So I believe he was hired through that office and is paid through that office. Yeah, that's what I know.
Ken was also our consultant, or maybe continues to be our consultant with the telecommunications code with Public Works.
Thank you.
Caitlin, do you have any direct response to the two people who spoke tonight? And some of the issues that they raised? My impression from last, the last meeting was there was very little that we could do to change because of federal law.
It isn't that there's very little that you can do, it's that the federal law requirements are very specific. But you do have quite a bit of room to make adjustments to the design regulations. There, there's a lot of room in the code for, for your review and for your recommended changes. I, I will not provide a response to the comments directly at this time, but I do want to reiterate that the public hearing does allow the process to continue and take in any comments from anybody that the planning commission and staff can then go back and work through with any adjustments and edits that we need to make further down the line.
Caitlin, we heard from anybody that is that has objections to these new changes that have wanted to present in a manner similar to what Mr. Feldman has presented?
Or a member of the public, or just has anybody approached me?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. Commissioner Casino, you muted yourself.
Eric, you're muted.
Has anybody from the opposing side of this asked to have as much time to speak to the planning commission as we've allowed Mr. Feldman?
I want to jump in here and clarify something, Mr. Feldman was not special, a special allowance of us, Mr. Feldman was hired by the county to provide, to help guide this process and provide his expertise in the formulation of this code, so he's, he's working on behalf of the county to provide, to make sure we stay within the legal sideboards under the federal law. Of course, the county's process allows for folks from all viewpoints to enter in and engage, that's why we have a public hearing and ability for folks to provide written and oral testimony, and we're not trying to censor anyone's ability to do that. That is welcome and appreciated, and we have some very articulate folks out there with a lot of things to say on this, and that's why we hold public hearings and have follow-up work sessions and make changes before you get to your planning commission recommendation for the board, who then has its own public hearing, but treat Mr. Feldman the equivalent to county staff for the purposes of this topic, that is his role in this particular topic, and I think the side he is presenting is the side of legal compliance.
Right, and just to answer your question, I haven't been approached by anybody else, and just as another note, Mr. Feldman did also work with the city of Tomwater as their consultant to complete their wireless code.
Caitlin, can you go back one slide? Down here under considerations that we can influence or change or do what we want from a county perspective, are these things spread out through this document? Or how easy would it be to highlight those areas where we can actually, where we could make changes if we wanted to?
It could be a fairly time-consuming process. But it would be possible if the planning commission directed staff to look into that.
So it's spread out throughout the document?
Yes.
Okay. So we do have to read it word for word and try to make a decision as to whether or not we could change it if we had a consideration that we wanted to make.
If, if you had questions, it would most likely require review from, from our attorneys to determine what the wiggle room is, and then staff could get back to you with what the possibilities are in regards to your concern.
Are there, since, are there early, you know, reading the code, maybe you haven't had time to look through it, it's lengthy, I know, and complex. But given the considerations that are spelled on, on this slide, are there particular places where the planning commission wants to zoom in and have a discussion around particular elements?
Well, my, part of my interest is, is the concealment and and how placement is, is, you know, how much awareness communities have when things are going to go in. I know that the communication companies are working at making smaller and smaller and less intrusive towers, so that's a benefit, but so, I mean, that's, that's my main concern. And I've seen towers down in the California desert that look like palm trees. It would be pretty easy for us to make them look like fir trees.
We have, we have one near downtown Olympia that looks like a big fir tree or spruce tree, maybe.
I guess from, from my point of view, my, my concerns aren't so much about the, you know, the aesthetic aspects of towers, but more about not even so much about what they're emitting, because I'm woefully unqualified to talk about what they're emitting. But public notice on when in, when anything else is going to go in, so if we have some controls over who gets notice of an incoming project and the timeframes for that, those are, those are things that I think that if we did a deep dive on, would not hurt my feelings.
And, and also not just the sighting of it, but the modifications to existing towers.
Yeah, currently, depending on the type of facility, it falls either under an administrative special use or or a type three special use, which you go to a hearing examiner. And the way that it's drafted at the moment, it falls under, I don't have it memorized, but whatever those permit requirements are at the moment. But there is possibility to make special adjustments for the wireless code, I believe.
So, any more thoughts or questions? Have, have, you know, I guess, has there been any stakeholder-type meetings on this? To get some input from the public and the other side, possibly?
There have been meetings with the service providers, and the main reason for that is because, you know, being large companies that deal with this frequently, we don't necessarily want to start off on the wrong foot with them. But there has not been additional outreach to other types of organizations, no, and I haven't received input from any either.
So I guess.
Oh, go ahead, we don't, we don't have a special stakeholder process built for this, there was early meetings that the prosecuting attorney's office held half-day meeting with service providers and the consultant to get early input on the scoping of these regulations. And then the public process is following the legislative process that we normally follow with public hearings and outreach and information and ability to comment.
So if I'm not hearing anything else, I guess we just move on to our next to the shoreline.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Caitlin.
Yeah, we can have a follow-up on your next agenda, and hopefully the consultant's available to join at that point, and I'd be thinking about your specific questions for specific parts of the wireless draft code. Since we didn't set a public hearing tonight, we can always set one at the next available opportunity, and it sounds like maybe you need to do some, you need some more time in thinking about the specific sections you want to dive into, and we can hit on those in the next round.
Sure, great. Thanks, Jennifer. Thanks, Caitlin. Okay, Andrew, looks like you're up.
I am up, so given that we don't have a quorum, I just wanted to touch base with everyone and your thoughts on that, so I understand. You know, we can certainly have a conversation about shoreline stabilization, but it sounds like any perhaps changes to the document, we cannot discuss until the next meeting, is that, if I'm gathering that correctly, is that correct, Jennifer?
That's correct, for the rules of procedure, they cannot comment on the reports received, but questions are good.
Okay, and I don't, yeah, I don't have much of a report, it would just be, I, information that planning commission has received in the past is the draft, the working draft and that memo, so I think if there are comments or questions on that memo, we could do that. Is that right? I, I want to make sure we use the time appropriately, because I understand, I'm assuming there's going to be some direction to, to make changes to the draft, and I know we can't do that tonight, so I just want to make sure that it's, we, you know, have something useful to do.
Well, perhaps us giving input on the memorandum that you sent out would give you some guidance as to where at least I, from my standpoint, where my thought process is going and for the others too. But, but that's about all I think we can do.
And I think that sounds fine, I can pull the memo up and we can work through it, like, it's, it's largely a distillation of, you know, state law, and then explaining where those pieces ended up in the draft, but yeah, I can take take questions or comments and, you know, if there are action items that come out of that, we can postpone those to the next, next time. Okay, well, let me go ahead and share. All right. Okay, are you guys seeing the memo?
Now we are.
Okay. Great, let me minimize. Okay, so yeah, I guess open for, for any questions that you all might have or things that you want me to look at or report back on. Let's have it. Well, by way of introduction, also, this is a memo that staff prepared for the planning commission on shoreline stabilization and its relationship to the shoreline master program, this is obviously a, it's a hot topic both at planning commission meetings and also it's something we hear about from the public, so this was an attempt to sort of encapsulate, you know, what, what does state law, where does it guide us on the issue of shoreline stabilization, and then how has the draft reflected the requirements of state law? And, you know, the planning commission can then have its discussion about which, which standards they might want to amend. So with that, I will turn it over.
Andrew, since, since we're just going to be talking in generalities here, maybe you can help square something in my head that I'm having a hard time with. And one of them, one of the big ones that I've had lately is when we're talking about using shoreline modifications to protect, protect stuff, it's, we're always talking about primary structures, but 231 also talks about legally existing uses. And we see that show up a couple of times in this memo, that uses are something that can be used, that can be protected. But then, when we talk about ancillary development, I think a lot of times what I have in my head as a use, other people would think of as an ancillary development. And so how do I make a differentiation between a use and an ancillary development? Like, a fire pit to me is as much of a use as it is an ancillary development, a tennis court or a basketball court same way, or, or something along those lines.
Yeah, and I think in putting this together, it was a little bit of a head-scratcher, but you know, you, you look at the way state law is written, where it starts with policies and principles and then makes it, makes its way down to standards and requirements, and those things can seem at times can seem contradictory, but you know, I, I try to look at look, the, the principles and the policies are guiding, but then, you know, the rubber hits the road when you get down to those standards, so yes, I think some of those more general, the general policies for shoreline modifications as a whole, and then some of the guiding language about shoreline stabilization and where it is authorized, perhaps give a sense that there may be a little bit more leeway, but for me, when you look at the four scenarios where new shoreline stabilization is authorized, it's pretty, it's pretty clear and it's pretty instructive that, you know, it shall not be authorized except for these four following cases, and so, so that's kind, that's where my analysis has gone, that, that's where my mindset is in looking at this. And we can, you know, talk about that, but just so you know, that, that's where, that's what I'm looking at, is all that pre, you know, preamble language about how and where you would do stabilization, but really the law is fairly restrictive when it comes down to, you know, you shall limit except for these scenarios. And I can scroll to that part of the memo here if that's useful, but that's a four different scenarios essentially, and it's protecting primary structures that are already existing. It's supporting, you know, new development that doesn't yet exist, but where there's no ability to cite it outside of an area that would require stabilization. And then the fourth one is for restoration projects. So, you know, it, to me, the closest thing to what you're talking about would be under number one, but you know, if you have a house and you have swing set and a fire pit and all that sort of stuff, I mean, this would not appear to me to allow you to, to authorize stabilization simply or just because of, you know, a threat to the fire pit. One thing that the draft does do, it talks about if you're going, if we are going to authorize structural stabilization, so essentially like a bulkhead or something like that, if we're going to authorize that for, to protect a structure, that structure has to be in like immediate risk or within the next three years, I think it says, so, so the Geotech report has to demonstrate that within three years, that primary structure is, is at risk from that eroding slope. However, the draft does say that that However, the draft does say that that, you know, if that rate of erosion is not so severe that it is threatened within three years, that doesn't preempt the use of non-structural measures to potentially, you know, slow that rate of erosion or stop it from getting worse. So that might be something to look into where you might not be able to get a bulkhead or retaining wall or something like that, but it could potentially authorize, you know, some softer stabilization methods. That was a lot. So. Sorry, lots scrambling around in here.
I guess I'm, I'm still having the same trouble Eric just said, is because it, it talks about many of these RCWs and whatnot. It talks about erosion impacts to property and dwellings. And they use, or it uses words like use, protects use. I mean, there's a number of places in all these different RCWs and, and wax that you reference where they, you know, primary structures or legal existing use is in danger. What that tells me is there should be some latitude if we have a strategy or and, and build the proper case. One of the things Sarah Castle said a year ago or two years ago, whatever, in one of our meetings is that we can, if you build, build the right case, you can do some things. And so, you know, with shoreline stabilization, depending on the, whether it's a marine environment, river environment, or a lake environment, there's, they're so different in both how the stabilization or why the stabilization is needed or not needed and what happens to the shoreline based on the, the currents, waves, actions, whatever is going on. And that's one of the major problems I have is that, you know, one, one, one scenario doesn't fit all three.
And I, I hear that and absolutely respect that because I know the other members of the public have brought that up in development standards for other types of uses. Where we run into problems with that in this specific instance is that state law doesn't seem to make that distinction. So it may make sense, or you may be able to build a case for making those distinctions, but, you know, there, there are not separate standards to apply depending on which environment you are in, you know, per state law.
Right. Because they, because it's mute on it basically.
Exactly. Right. It applies everywhere because it doesn't say otherwise.
Yeah. But could you, could you interpret that a different way and say, because they weren't specific, that gives us latitude to make a differentiation? I mean, I don't understand why you can't do it the other way.
Yeah. Well, and I think, I mean, what I was sort of informally noodling on, on this is that I don't know that, that we'll ever see eye to eye on this, this issue. So if there is a, but I started thinking along your lines there. If, I mean, if, if you are seeing something or planning commission sees something, you know, through these rules that you want me to propose and send up the chain with the next draft, I mean, we can certainly do that. I mean, we can ask the question, if, if you see, you know, a path through here and you've mentioned some citations or that, you know, you think potentially allows some leeway, I can look at those and see if there's another way to, to build things. But I think when I've looked at that and when I've had questions about, you know, how permissive a statute actually is, I usually find something deeper in it that is, you know, more to the point and potentially contradictory to what was before it. You know, where it might say protecting uses, protecting this and that above, but down below gives very specific cases where, where you're able to do, you know, new stabilization.
I understand in a marine environment what happened. I mean, we, we've watched grayland wash away in the ocean and we, you can, and you see people building bulkheads in a marine environment, which causes the tide to form another jetty or whatever. It just moves stuff around. So I understand that. And rivers, the same way. You can, you know, you, you need movement of the river stream to be healthy and, and by changing the direction of the stream, you can cause problems downstream. I understand those things. But as I pointed out a number of times about the, the lakes in Thurston County and, and how they're dying. You know, a lake is different and a lake is, I think that if we, that if we put a policy in this document that says that the county values a lake because it provides a red reservoir, it replenishes groundwater, it provides flood control and drought control, provides recreation habitat, provides tax dollars, both in, and from the property, from fishing license, sales taxes, tourism, on and on, it provides value to the county. Therefore, we should have processes, procedures or guidelines in the SMP to, to protect that. And from that, then you could build the, because the, the wax and the RCWs allow protection of use and allow protection of, of property, or it states it. And even though it's not one of these four listed, you could then draw the logic that we could have a number five or a number six for a lake, something different. So that would be a strategy to do it. We had a conversation with the, the county commissioners today at a briefing for the lakes management districts. And one of the points we were talking about was that this is a, this is a bigger picture. You don't, you can't just go after the little things. And the shoreline is only a part of water quality. It's a small part. We're spending a lot of time and energy and dollars talking about the shoreline, but not about water quality. And the shoreline ecological function is what it's doing is helping water quality theoretically. So that's my point is if we, if we had a policy that, that stated the value of the lake and, and, and keeping it from becoming utropic because it takes, it takes tax dollars, it reduces its ability to provide control and drought control and those kinds of things. Then you can build a case.
Um, do you happen to have, did you write down the citations that talk about use versus other cases? I, I mean, I could go back and probably find it. I just didn't know if you, if you happen to have that marked up on your draft somewhere and could email that to me.
I do have it. I have it highlighted and underlined and, you know, I'll scan the document and send it to you.
Okay. The other thing I wanted to just touch on, you mentioned the utrophic lakes. You know, based on the information that I received from the county hydrogeologist, we do not have enough data to draw conclusions on the contribution to eutrophication that may come from shoreline erosion. I just want to put that out there. We don't, we can't quantify that. So we can talk about that as a potential source, much like, you know, stormwater outfalls or streams that have contaminated runoff or direct runoff or groundwater infiltration, things like that. It is a source, but we can't, we can't know the relative contribution without, you know, more study where we just have not studied that in this county. So, but yeah, I mean, just to go back to your point, again, draw out to a close. That, that is kind of where I had landed, knowing that potentially the, you know, planning commission may advocate for more scenarios of surrounding stabilization and, you know, the only way to do that, the only way in my mind, the only way, the only path forward would be to attempt to build, you know, build a case based on what's in the, the wax and RCWs and see where that gets us when we take this draft forward. Because, you know, there's a big check coming up with, with the public hearing where the public can weigh in on that and ecology will weigh in on that. And, you know, we can see how that, how that goes. Are there any other comments or thoughts on the shoreline stabilization memo?
Andy, I was just thinking if the planning commission or, or individual members of the planning commission had alternatives that they wanted to specifically insert into the draft in different, whatever the different sections are that address shoreline stabilization and make exceptions in lakes or however you want to say it. I mean, that could be inserted for the public hearing draft. That's fine. All, the process would be that the planning commissioner who wants to see it would have to help kind of write that up and then make sure we had a majority of the planning commissioners at the next meeting, obviously, saying, yeah, let's insert this into the draft. So if somebody wants to put those, the pen to paper with those thoughts, and obviously Andy can help massage that. But, uh, so it fits in code language wise, but that's definitely a possibility, just like we put in options elsewhere in the draft. I think it is a steep hill to climb. So as much of a citation, you can add to that or footnotes or whatever to, to make that case. As I read this memo and the wax, I don't know that we have a lot of latitude around that, but I feel like, you know, it's definitely within your purview to add whatever options you want to take to public hearing and review. So let's, let's, uh, make that so if the majority of the planning commission wants to at the next meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll do that. I mean, I'll take a shot at it and send that information to Andrew.
Yeah. Anyone can send that to me directly and then, you know, for distribution purposes, I can zip it out to everyone before the next planning commission meeting. You, you all won't discuss it as a whole until the next meeting. But yeah, anything that comes to me, I can get back out to the planning commission for, you know, the whole commission's consideration.
Would it, would you be able to bounce it off of Sarah?
I can try. Yeah, I could try. I can let her know it's coming. Well, let me, I, I absolutely can. Yes, I can. Whether I can bounce it off of her and back to you by the next meeting is, is another question. I will, I will try my hardest.
Yeah, I was thinking it saves this time if she says absolutely not.
Right. And I, you know, she is anecdotally aware that this is one of the topics that you all are still working on in the draft. So I don't think it would be a surprise. I also, you know, I, I, yeah. So she's also read this memo and she also was like, yep, that sounds about right. So I'm happy to bounce things off of her. But again, like Jennifer said, I, I believe it may be a steep hill to climb, but I, you know, I think that's our job is to facilitate your vision through the appropriate channels. So. Okay.
I got one more, if you could, and this is mainly just because I, I've gotten myself confused. Can you explain the process for a cup? The difference between an administrative cup and a non-administrative cup? Because I was under the impression that if somebody were to obtain an administrative cup, it would not then require going to ecology before construction can commence.
Oh, it, it still would. It very much still would. So conditional use permits and variances under the shoreline management act explicitly require ecology approval before they take effect. But, but ecology has said at, they, they are not concerned with who reviews it at the local level. You know, the county would approve that, that conditional use permit before it goes to ecology, whether it is staff that approves that or whether it is a hearing examiner that approves that, that is up to the county to determine how we do that. But at the end of the day, if it's called, if it, if it is called a cup, if it's called a variance, no matter what word comes before it, administrative or not, ecology has approval of that before it takes effect.
Okay.
The same is not true for the substantial development permits.
Yeah. So a hearing examiner go ahead is not enough. You still need to get ecology to sign off it too.
That's correct. Okay. That's correct. And I, it's also worth mentioning, even a substantial development permit, even, even if that's a final decision by the county, if that decision is issued on the first of the month, you still cannot break ground for three more weeks. And that is to allow the appeal process to play out and that state law, we can't change that. Okay. Thank you very much for that.
But last, last meeting, we decided that we wouldn't require a cup or an admin cup for.
Right. Yeah.
And for residents, the, it's, even an SDP is excluded. So we have the option of requiring a cup. We don't have to.
That is correct. That's correct. And I have changed the draft to basically say that down in the, I'm not making it final until, you know, this is all done. And I also wanted to have, go through this conversation before I went back and changed the table. But essentially the way that the text reads down below is that shoreline stabilization for, you know, what's the word? That's a typical for single family homes, however it's worded in the state law. It, I have that listed out, colon, you know, exempt if it meets this requirement. And then below that is all other forms of stabilization, colon, SDP, unless they're also exempt. So the way that they would be exempt, I believe is, is if the cost is below the threshold, but I don't know how likely that is because it's like $7,000. And last I had heard, it takes a lot more than that to build a bulkhead. So it's a, yeah. So, so an SDP would only be required if you don't meet the exclusion criteria essentially. But, but the planning commission does have the wherewithal or the latitude rather to, to exclude the requirement for a cup. And that is what you all have done and that is how the draft will read. So. Okay. Are there other comments on the, the memo and this sort of this background of this issue? Because otherwise it sounds like we can revisit the draft when we had a quorum. And if there are conversation topics related to anything that you send me between now and then, you know, you all can have that conversation at that time. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, dope. So thanks, Andrew. So we're looking for staff updates, I guess, Jen.
Yeah. Um, not much, except for I did want to acknowledge that in May, you had scheduled May 19th as your regular meeting and May 20th as a special meeting where you're having your Tom Water joint land public hearing. So I'm inclined to cancel May 19th. So you don't have to have a back to back evening meetings. May 5th will be a full agenda because we will be having follow up to wireless. Our consultant will be there. I checked in with him and he's available. The, so come ready with your questions, the SMP continuation, but also a new item, which is coming to you, which is a minor amendment to the capital improvement program in line with our spring budget amendment cycle. So that's going to come to you. It's very minor. But it's on a tight timeline. So we got to squeeze that in on May 5th. So May 19th, I think we could probably get away with skipping in favor of the May 20th public hearing. But a quorum is going to be super important for the public hearing. So we'll do our best to get notification out to everyone on that.
If we had an option, I'd rather cancel May 5th and keep the 19th. I'm going to be out of town on the 5th. So.
I understand that, but unfortunately can't cancel me fifth because of these other agenda items that we have teed up that are of kind of critical importance to bring before you due to a timeline issue with this CIP. So. But I think.
You're on your phone right now, Jim?
Yeah.
So what do you just do FaceTime and look into it? How, you know?
Same, same thing that I did, you know, with the computer. I clicked on the link in the memo and the email and then put in the password that got me here.
You have to download Zoom app to your phone.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll try that because I may be able to attend on the 5th then.
Okay.
Figure out how to use my phone.
Well, it's, it's a little different than the computer, but you know, us old guys will figure it out.
Hey, you did a good job. You looked, I mean.
I don't know. It was sweating.
A meeting without a quorum?
No, I'm not asking to cancel it tonight. You can cancel it formally on.
On the 5th?
On the 5th. I'm just putting it out there that that's the plan in case anyone was concerned about back to back.
Have we heard from the missing members from tonight if they will be there on the 5th?
We've not, but we will reach out to them to find out.
Okay, dope. Thanks, Jennifer. And by the way, welcome back.
Thanks.
Yeah. So I'm assuming that the hardcore that are on the screen right now will be here on the 5th. Not me, except for Doug.
And let, I mean, I'll try, but I can make my phone work in my bed and breakfast or wherever that guy am that night.
Well, that's, yeah.
Oh man, that doesn't sound, that doesn't sound romantic to get on here.
It's the last night of the trip, so.
Well, we're, well, how about this Doug? We'll let you know if it, we'll, we'll beat the drums and get as many people to commit to May 5th so that we can be assured as we can possibly be for a quorum and then let you know if you're kind of off the hook. And obviously the issues around the lake shoreline stabilization, since you're a big. And obviously the issues around the lake shoreline stabilization, since you're a big voice in that, if you can't make May fifth, we can always, you know, skip that particular topic and work through everything else. Um, so we'll just, we'll keep you posted on all of that development.
Thank you.
Great, thanks, Jeff. So anybody have any comments or anything new they need to bring up? Then seven twenty-three, we're adjourned. Thanks all, all staff.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.